Wake up Wake County and the Wake County League of Women Voters present, the 2011 Wake County School Board District Five Candidate Forum.
This is a forum, a forum is designed to give all the candidates an opportunity to present themselves and to speak on the issues. Members of the Wake County Board of Education serve a four-year term. All members represent a district in the county. Voters must be residents of a district to vote for a candidate in that district. The districts serve staggered terms. This year, districts three, four, five, six, and eight are open for election. All candidates are nonpartisan, meaning they are not running as representatives of a political party. Tonight, we are doing the forum for District Five. All right, now for the candidates. We've made just a couple of minor adjustments to the format to allow for as much participation as possible and still finish in a reasonable amount of time. Each candidate will still have two minutes to address the first three questions. For the opening statement, they will speak in alphabetical order. For the closing statement, the candidates will speak in reverse order. Please keep an eye on the timer, who will give you a 15-second warning, and please end when you are signaled to do so. At the end of this, I'll state the questions again, just so the audience knows what questions you have. Each candidate will now have one minute per question to answer all the questions posed by the moderator or the audience. Each candidate will still have three minutes to deliver a closing statement at the end of the question period. This will conclude the forum. Before we get to the conclusion, audience members who wish to ask questions will line up at the microphone here when we have completed the first part of the question period. All candidates will respond to each question. We will allocate approximately 30 minutes to audience questions. This portion of the forum may be concluded even if there are still people in line to ask a question. Please keep a respectful attitude and devote only 15 to 30 seconds to asking your question. Okay. The three questions that the candidates were given in advance, that they will structure their introductory statement are the following. Please, what do you hope to accomplish when you serve on the Wake County Board of Education? What specific skills and qualities would you contribute to the Board of Education? Serving on the Board of Education is an extremely time-consuming commitment to the community. It can also be very stressful. Why do you want to take on this challenge? Okay. So going in alphabetical order, we will start with Mr. Martin.
Thank you. I'd like to answer those questions in reverse order. First of all, I want to let you know that I'm running for the Wake County School Board because I want to guarantee a world-class education for all of our students. I have extensive experience with education and governance, so I understand the challenges that will face me as a board member. However, I also understand the challenges faced in the classroom when decisions are made by politicians with no experience in the actual practice of educating students. For this reason, I'm committed to bringing education-focused leadership to the Board of Education. I am an experienced educator and a researcher, being a professor at NC State University, professor of chemistry since 1994. I was elected to the and served in the administrative governance post of Chair of the Faculty at NC State University, and for more than a decade, I've been a volunteer in the Wake County Public School System. And importantly, I'm the parent of two children in the Wake County Public Schools. Thus, I will bring leadership to the Board that has the perspective of a parent, the classroom experience of a teacher, and an understanding of effective governance and administration in an educational setting. Now, as far as what I want to accomplish, my primary goal is to bring education-focused, nonpartisan leadership through the Board of Education. But beyond this, there are three priorities that I will focus on. First, I want to enhance student achievement through comprehensive education. To rise to the top in a global marketplace, our graduates need the creativity of the arts, the critical thinking of science, broad communication skills, the perspective of history, and hands-on vocational technical experience. Secondly, I want to enhance the status of the teaching profession. It is the responsibility of the Board to develop an employment structure that recruits and retains teaching professionals and respects their work. And thirdly, I'm committed to working to provide adequate resourcing of our public schools. I recognize that education is an investment in, not a cost, to our community.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see the stop sign. I figured you were not using your full two minutes. All right, thank you very much. Okay, and next, Ms. Mattson.
Would you mind rereading the question because I'd like to respond in order?
Okay, no problem. What do you hope to accomplish when you serve on the Wake County Board of Education? What specific skills and qualities would you contribute to the Board of Education? Serving on the Board of Education is an extremely time-consuming commitment to the community. It can also be very stressful. Why do you want to take on this challenge?
Thank you. And thank you all for coming, and thank you to our hosts tonight for having us all here to open this dialogue. I have many priorities for the Board, but they're very focused with very measurable results. I'd like to provide families with neighborhood schools that offer equitable program offerings from district to district, so families do not have to travel outside, to the other side, actually, of their county to benefit from programs that are not offered in their own district. My second top priority is to increase stability in assignments by developing and adhering to a long-term plan for growth. We can accomplish this by partnering with local municipalities, businesses, and chambers of commerce to assess where the growth is occurring and put a plan in place that accommodates the influx of the new students. Increasing student achievement for all students by evaluating skill levels is another major priority of my campaign, and allocating resources where they are needed most. We can accomplish this by developing the KIPP School Model. KIPP Schools are knowledge-is-power programs. They're actually public schools, and there are 109 of them nationwide. They are intentionally placed in high-poverty neighborhoods, and 95% of the students who attend are African-American or Latino. 85% qualify for free and reduced lunch. Now, why is that important? Because 95% go on to graduate high school, and 85% go on to college. Those are statistics that I would like to see in Wake County schools. There are 20% of children that drop out in our county. I'd like to revive our vocational-technical education so that all children have the ability to gain skills that are needed in industry to make them attractive to employers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, first question, I'll start with Cynthia Matson, I'm very sorry. The School Board is currently reviewing new options for a student assignment plan. What is your vision for an ideal student assignment plan?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, we really need to look at what the community has been asking for. For the last 10 years, I've been working as an advocate with families to bring choice, proximity, and stability to our school system. I started an organization, Assignment By Choice, and I have helped to unite the community to bring about more equity. And we really need to have equity from district to district so that all children can benefit from these programs. So again, our superintendent, Toni Teta, is moving in that direction based on surveys from the public that really brings the resources forward. It gets community involvement. In terms of academic achievement, as I mentioned, we can bring in this KIPP School Model. We can also revive the vocational-technical education program. I actually run an ITT Technical Institute, and I see the product every day of what we are able to accomplish by providing these skills to students and how it benefits them and our entire community and industry.
Thank you.
You know, there's been a lot of tension focused on an assignment plan, an assignment of students' plan, and I think we would have been a whole lot more effective as a county if we would have spent more time focusing on the assignment of resources rather than assignment of students. Because what every survey showed is that more than 95% of the residents in Wake County were satisfied with their assignment, but what we do need to make sure we do is focus on the assignment of resources. In terms of an assignment plan, we need to focus on two things, as I see it. One is the growth in the county, and the second is student achievement. We need to work with our municipalities, our county commissioners, to come up with strategic plans for growth, and that will impact how we assign our students. We also need to pay attention to student achievement, and this is where I think we've had the greatest failure. We've had too much reassignment of students. If a student doesn't have a stable assignment, if they're shifted from school year by year by year, you don't have the opportunity to build that relationship with teachers that actually does impact student achievement. So stability to help student achievement will be critical.
Thank you. All right, Jim, you can go next. What are the specific needs of District Five that you will fight for if elected to the Board of Education?
Well, first of all, the specific needs need to be looked at in the context of the entire county, but specifically in District Five, we've had a lot of issues of stability of assignment. That really does need to be addressed, particularly our RIM schools have had major issues of reassignment, so we need to really pay attention to that. District Five is also an area where we haven't seen and will not be seeing a lot of new construction. That said, we have a lot of facilities that have been built a few years ago and need some attention. I'll highlight the issues at Athens Drive, their sports complex, where the restroom facilities are problematic, the handicapped accessibility is problematic, many things are problematic. Our older schools need attention with good renovation and resources. And finally, the issue that we need to pay attention to is the quality of our curriculum. We need to make sure that we have quality curriculum in every school. Sometimes people see the Magnet program and other programs as an either-or. I don't believe that at all. We need to make sure we have very high-quality curriculum in every one of our schools.
Thank you. And Ms. Mattson?
I definitely feel that we need more equity in District Five, and again, relating to our district as the question asked. And stability has been an issue because we've seen such growth in the outer-county area. So the other thing that, again, I cannot stress enough that I'm such an advocate for is the vocational-technical education, and Superintendent Teta just mentioned that he's looking to put a new school in place for career and technical education in the 2013-2014 school year, and I would love to see that come to District Five. Let us have something that's attractive and to help us to train our students. When it comes to equity from district to district, I personally don't feel that it's right that certain schools have more electives than others, that certain schools have five foreign languages when others have none or just getting one. So that's what I'm referring to when I talk about equity. But ultimately, we need to plan for the growth. We need to be buying land now while it's cheap and banking it for future growth, and that will help stability.
Thank you. Okay, the next question. Earlier, school boards and Superintendent Teta have advocated the development of specialized academies, for example, schools which focus on STEM skills, single-gender leadership, and science academies. Would your support for these new schools affect your support of the current selection and availability of Magnet schools? Ms. Mattson, you can go first.
Well, again, my children have attended Magnet schools, and I understand the importance of them in our county, but they were initially created to help to diversify the population. A lot of people do not realize that there are more minorities in Wake County schools than non-minorities, and we do not need to manufacture diversity in our county. We have it. What we need to focus on is learning and education. So in terms of your question, I think an expansion of science, technology, engineering, and math is critical, and I know the plan is to continue to extend that throughout the entire district as well as our county. And I also do believe that there is a time and a place for single-sex schools, and that they've been proven to be very effective models. Now, those would be choice options, so it would not be, I do not advocate for anything mandatory. I advocate for parents choosing that for their child if they feel it's in their best interest, because no one knows better for a child than a parent.
Thank you.
I think we need to understand and differentiate themed schools from Magnet schools. You need to understand the federal legislation for Magnet schools. The purpose was largely to work at integration and to work at making sure we effectively use capacity. Those are tied up in the legislation for Magnet schools. That said, there can be an appropriate place for themed schools. The two you mentioned, the science academies and the single-sex academies, do raise some questions. I'm always intrigued when people are talking about science academies, and I'd like to ask many of them, how many science classes or how much science experience you have? I happen to be a chemistry professor, and I will tell you the most valuable training that I had in high school to be the chemist that I am today were the woodshop classes that I took, where I learned design, structure, and fine craftsmanship. So I do worry when we see themed schools that are focusing on facts and calling that science. I want to make sure you get comprehensive education because that will make our best scientists. In terms of the single-sex academies, this is something that was rushed through with no study, no planning. We heard it first, brought to the table three weeks ago, and it was passed yesterday. That's not good governance.
In 1991, year-round calendar choice was offered as a way to address rapid growth at a lower cost than having all schools on a traditional calendar. What role do you see year-round schools playing as our county continues to grow? Jim, you can go first.
The role that calendar choice will play depends a lot on what resources we, as the community, are willing to invest in our schools. If we're willing to build as many schools as we possibly can, we can keep with a traditional model if that is our choice. If we're not willing to build the same number of capacity of schools, we're going to have to do more year-round schools, that with year-round, we can achieve about a third extra capacity for the same school. That said, calendar choice, traditional calendar, are different priorities for different families. My daughter went to a modified year-round, and that was a phenomenal schedule for her. Not everybody wants to make that choice, so I think there is value in having choice of calendar option. I don't think we should necessarily mandate it. I would recommend that all voters invest sufficiently so that we can actually have calendar choice. If we choose not to invest in building schools, we'll have to go that way just because of capacity.
Thank you.
And I do believe that there is a demand for year-round schools. I know a lot of families, myself personally included, that have benefited from the year-round calendar. It's not an option for everyone, but it is an option, and it should remain a choice in our system. If we do not have the financing to build the schools that we need for capacity as we continue to grow and have a massive influx to our region, which is so nationally recognized, then we need to really reevaluate how we're going to utilize the space that we currently have, because we have schools that are under-enrolled and we have schools that are over-enrolled. But again, mandating this, it was the low-income families that bore the brunt of mandatory forced busing, and that is something that I don't want to see mandated ever again. It should be a choice, and each district should have choices for year-round, for Magnet, and for traditional.
All right, the next question will go to you. The Wake County Public Schools are likely to need additional funds to build and improve schools in the near future. Would you support a bond initiative with a potential for increased taxes to raise these funds? If not, why not? If so, how would you convince the citizens of Wake County to support it?
Well, as a public official, we are servants. We are here to serve the best interests of our constituents, and it is not my decision to make for my community. It is a decision for the community to make. I am here to represent. I am here to listen and to put forth what the community as a whole and a majority would like. So I will leave it to the community to make that decision.
All right.
The reality is, we're going to be out of high school seats next year. We're going to be out of middle school seats in about two years, and elementary school seats in about four to five years. We've gotten ourselves into a situation that we have no other option, I believe, than to pass a bond or dramatically raise your taxes. Bonds are a way to pay overtime. They're not, you know, you don't get it all when the bond is passed. So the reality is, we've gotten ourselves to a crisis. We have to do something. Now, I'm not a big fan of this crisis-to-bond, crisis-to-bond style of dealing with our school capacity needs. I think we need to open up a conversation, particularly with the private sector, recognizing that one of the most important questions as to whether a business comes to any area is the quality of their schools. We need to start looking at incentives to businesses that are investments in infrastructure that are going to help everybody, both the businesses being recruited and the businesses that are currently here. I think some of that investment in infrastructure can help address some of our school issues as we address growth.
Thank you. Okay, and this will be the last question in this section of the forum, and then we will go to audience questions. Why should someone who does not have any children in the public schools vote in this election and, more importantly, vote for you? Jim?
Yeah, that question is commonly asked. 70% of the voters in Wake County do not have children in the public school system, and so it's a very legitimate question to ask. Why should I vote if I don't have kids in the system? And to that, I ask a question, what a professor does. Students do better if you ask questions. Can you think of any innovative society, any innovative community that does not have a strong public school system? I can't. They don't exist. So if you want an innovative community, a community where there's jobs, if you want children to be educated to frankly help you when you go to the store or to the bank, then you're going to need good, quality public education. If you don't have good, quality public education, we're going to see a much bigger school-to-prison pipeline. I don't want to see that happen. So if you want an innovative community, everyone needs to care about public education. It's a responsibility of citizens, not to mention it'll keep your property taxes low and your property values up.
Okay, before I answer that question, I'd like to make one more response to the bond question. There's money still left over from the last bond, and we need to make sure that we're looking at what we have already before we start asking taxpayers for more money and to incur more taxes. In addition to that, the superintendent's department just found $10 million in the budget that was not dispersed. So we need to drill down into our budget and make sure, before we go out asking for more money, that it's needed and it's being allocated properly. Could you repeat the question again, ma'am?
I don't think you have much time for it, but it's, why should people who don't have children in the school system vote?
The other thing, okay. The other thing, too, is that there's 72% of your tax dollars go to Wake County Public Schools, and so everyone should have a voice in the way their tax dollars are being spent. And the health of the community is directly affected by the health of the Wake County school system, so it impacts everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Audience members who want to ask questions can line up here. You'll be using this microphone, and I can go through a few special rules. Please be respectful and brief. If your question was addressed in an earlier part of the forum, please let someone else ask a question. You're unlikely to get a different answer than the one you heard the first time. Please phrase your question so that it is relevant to both candidates. Questions targeted to only one candidate will not be allowed. Please allow voters who live in District Five priority in asking the questions. Thank you. I'll give you just a minute or two to kind of line up here.
Oh, okay, that's great. Maybe, yeah, that would be great. Okay. Hello? Hello? Oh, it's not on. The green light does not mean it's on.
Hello? Okay, great.
So I'll just, well, actually, it's probably better to, actually, it's probably better to stay up here because of a camera. Okay. So we won't be using. Okay.
Hi, my name is Adrian. My question is, I'd like to follow up on a statement that Ms. Mattson made in regards to your support of KIPP Schools, and would like to find out from both of the candidates how you think we can address that, particularly given issues that per pupil spending in KIPP Schools is typically twice that of public schools, and there's an extremely high teacher churn rate there. You also indicated that they would be focused for African-American students, and I'm wondering what about Caucasian students who are academically challenged or FNR students? I'd also like to get Mr. Martin's comments on what he thinks of KIPP.
Okay, in regards to KIPP Schools, KIPP Schools are public schools, so we have to keep that in mind. In terms of them costing more per pupil spending, what people need to understand is that across the country, per pupil spending has doubled, but academic achievement has flatlined. So we need to look at addressing what is working in our community, and KIPP Schools work. KIPP Schools are producing individuals that are coming out and having the capability to be productive members of our society. As I mentioned earlier, the statistics I provided are what relate to KIPP Schools. There's no reason why we cannot implement a similar model for all students in Wake County Schools. And basically, in terms of this comment about the churn rate for teachers, that's not something I'm aware of. Actually, I feel quite confident that these are individuals who are very, very happy to see the results, because we all know that teachers don't teach for the pay. They teach for the reward of seeing students achieve.
So KIPP Schools are an interesting example. There are cases where they've done very well and cases where they haven't done very well when you look at the statistics. A couple of things go on with the KIPP Schools. First of all, they get to choose which students come to the school. That's not something that we do in Wake County. We don't get to select which schools we're going to, which students we're going to educate, which we don't. Another thing that you have in most of the KIPP Schools is a much smaller class size. You see the same thing being talked about in these single-sex academies that have been proposed. The Longview Center and the Pilot Mills facility have maximum classroom sizes of 15 to 20 children. Most high school teachers that I know of, and elementary school as well, would dearly love to have class sizes of 15 to 20 students. So if we want to talk about things like the KIPP Academy, please, let's go ahead and lower the class size to 15 or 20 students across the board. And please understand, that's where your extra cost in education is going to come from, because we need more classrooms, we need more people in those classrooms. So yes, it is more expensive. We, as a community, could choose to invest. Let's do it for everybody.
If the legislature and the county commission are to give more funding to schools, do you propose they take funding from other programs to give to education, or do you propose the only other option, which is to raise taxes?
Time, Jim.
Well, the School Board has absolutely no authority over taxation. That said, we do have a responsibility to advocate for appropriate funding, and I will do that by working with county commissioners and the legislators. I did that as Chair of the Faculty at NC State University. I have experience working with budgets. I have experience working with legislators to advocate for when and where we need funding. I don't think we need to cut from other programs. I don't know any business that grows by cutting. You have to invest in capital if you ever want to produce anything more. The business model in education requires the same kind of thing. I think it was irresponsible that we did not ask the county commissioners for constant per-pupil funding. We had more people coming to the area. They should have brought in revenue. Let's make sure growth and funding go together. I think it was irresponsible of the state legislature to get rid of that one-cent sales tax. Nobody misses it. You recognize if we added $20 per $200,000 property value, we'd be able to address many of the needs that we have in our schools. I think most of us can handle a meal at McDonald's.
I disagree. I do not believe in raising taxes. I do not believe that families today in these economic times can afford any more taxation. We need better representation. We need people who know how to look at a budget and find money. We need to be working on collaborating with other county departments to be able to go in on cellphone plans and whatever we can do to get volume discounts. We need to be, like I mentioned earlier, land banking, buying it now for future growth. We need to be really utilizing the- We need to be really utilizing the grant opportunities that are out there and maximizing them throughout the county. There's a lot of ways to save money. Um, we can also, um, look at all the contracts that we have now and require, when they expire, that they could be, come open for rebid, so that people are aggressively competing for our business. There's a lot of ways to save money without adding to taxes.
Hello, I'm Susan Osborne. Accountability has become kind of a byword, um, in education these days, and I wonder if you each would explain what you mean by accountability and what factors go into that.
Okay, when it comes to accountability, there's all different people who need to be held accountable. Our commissioners, our school board, our administration, our teachers, our students, and it depends on what's being measured. Our focus, again, needs to be on academic achievement and the accountability for academic achievement. And I cannot stress enough that we need to utilize things like what No Child Left Behind tells us, not to put us out there and say that only 22 schools pass No Child Left Behind, but to look at the facts and figures and drill down to see which subgroups are failing and how do we address their needs academically? How do we funnel the resources to them? So in terms of accountability, I have to tie it right back to academic achievement because the purpose of Wake County schools is to educate our, our students.
You're absolutely right that accountability has become a buzzword. Too often, when we're talking about education, accountability is tied to standardized testing. Standardized testing sadly, is a pretty poor judge of education. Standardized testing is a tool, but it is a tool, a blunt, rather blunt tool that can give you some indicators as to whether things are on the right track or badly on the wrong track, but you really can't learn much in detail from that level of testing. They can indicate, I better look at this at some greater level of depth. In terms of accountability, I think I have a pretty good idea how to address some of those issues, having been in the classroom. I know how to assign grades. I know how to work with students, trying to motivate them, but let me tell you, if I've done everything I can to motivate a student and they don't take an exam, I think you can guess what grade they're going to get. So accountability needs to go both ways. As a professor, it is my job to work with and bend over backwards for every student that wants to learn, but accountability cannot be a one-way street. Students need some level of accountability. The community needs some level of accountability, like we just talked about on terms of funding. If we want good quality schools, we as a community, as citizens, need to step up to the plate and make sure that that's available.
Part of my, um, complaints with the Wake County School Board over the, since about 1972, excuse me, is the shell game that keeps being played in like No Child, excuse me, No Child Left Behind. There are over 30 categories of students in the elementary school grade level where we put kids in certain categories. Teachers are teaching to 30 different categories. They're grading on 30 different categories. We're asking an awful lot to do that, and the bottom line is, as they get into middle school, they start getting lost. By the time they get to high school, they're dropping out. They can't pass the SATs or make a decent score on the SATs, and they can't get jobs. And so the bottom line, I'm, I'm looking for is, what are the candidates going to do at the elementary school level to make sure that every child that reaches the middle school is not already on a track to either drop out or not be able to function in society?
Well, it goes back to accountability. It goes back to standardized test scores. How are we to measure where a student is if we don't use some standardization? We have to have some measure, and then we are able to determine what those children need to be able to improve. Um, and, and in getting back to, um, you talking about KIP schools and them selecting students, do you think our weighted lottery doesn't select students? It absolutely does. So, and again, you know, equity and access to schools makes a difference as well in terms of how our students succeed academically, starting right in the elementary level. So, um, basically, students are students. They're kids, and we have to help them to get through. Not everyone learns the same way, and every student in every classroom knows which students struggle. And we need to have passionate teachers that pick up that phone when a kid misses school and calls them and says, "Where are you? Is everything okay? We want to keep you engaged." That's what I require of my instructors on my campus, and I think all public schools should be doing that.
You're absolutely right that No Child Left Behind has been a big shell game. One of my undergraduate students who works in my laboratory, I think, said it best. He came from Eastern North Carolina where the schools weren't terribly strong, very brilliant student, didn't have as many opportunities as he should have had, and his comment to me was, "Dr. Martin, you know, the only way that you can have No Child Left Behind is if you allow No Child to get ahead." Sadly, that is the legacy of No Child Left Behind. We've seen far too much standardized testing. I see the products of it when they come to my class, my chemistry class. You can pass a standardized exam, but you can't necessarily put all the pieces together that you need if you really care about education. I'll go back to my analogies of the wood shop, which was so critical for me becoming the chemist that I am today. If all I do is measure, particularly standardized measurements, I'm going to have a lot of boards that have very careful tick marks on them, but they're going to be a stack of boards. If I don't build, if I don't craft, I'll never get a fine piece of furniture. And what we need in our education system is people know how to build and craft, and last I checked, we can differentiate a fine piece of furniture than something we got at Walmart. We can evaluate beyond standardized measures.
All right. Oh, good. I was going to say, we still have some time. Oh, yeah, yeah. If you could just state your name when you're asking.
My name is T.C. Rhodes, and I have a question about advocating for schools whose success depends on small classroom size. Citing the very recent, current example of the brand-new Walnut Creek Elementary School, racially identifiable, very high poverty in southeast Raleigh. As a public, we were guaranteed, we were promised that it would open with 755 students and under 20 kids per classroom. Day 10, 877 students and well over 20. So, my question for you is, how do you cope with that?
Hi, Jim. Who went first or last, Emma?
I think I did. I think Jim's up.
Okay.
Um, how do you cope with distorting facts? I try not to. How do you cope with promises that can't be kept? I try not to make them in the first place. I personally was very disappointed to see Walnut Creek open the way that it was. I was talking with a parent at Walnut Creek a couple of weeks ago, and they decried the fact that we opened it as a Title I school instead of opening it as a magnet school. The Walnut Creek parents that I'm aware of would like to see us today turn it into a magnet school instead of a Title I school. So we need a little bit of honesty as we put our statistics and plans together. We need to be able to stick to what we're talking about, but we also need to have vision that's not going to open Title I schools. We're not going to put people at risk to start. The folks at Walnut Creek are working their hearts out, and nominal principal, teachers working very hard. They're going to do the very best they can to succeed, but we've given them a very challenging situation to work with. We shouldn't do that.
Well, we're using the Race to the Top Funds, which was a grant that we received to fund that program, and it is a program, it is a pilot. And I cannot speak to the decision that was made to have more students in the school than, um, what you say had been proposed. Um, however, all of the administration, the teachers, everyone that works at that school had to reapply to, to, uh, be considered for that school. And in that process, they took on the responsibility and the challenge, knowing that that school was going to have additional challenges, but it also has additional resources. And so we need to look at the fact that we can't condemn the school on the 10th day. Let's see what the results are. Let's give those cha, those children an opportunity to succeed. Let's give those individuals who are paid by performance in that school an opportunity before we decide that it's a failure.
My name is Lynn Edmonds, and I am a District Five voter. Do you intend to preserve the magnet system as it is today? And if so, how, with, or without a choice plan?
Cynthia, thank you.
I, again, I do support magnet schools, but I also support equity. And I do believe that we need more equity across the board. And again, the, the intent and purpose of magnet schools initially was to diversify schools. And again, I will repeat, we have more minorities in Wake County schools than non-minorities. So I don't, I don't have a plan to dismantle magnet schools, but I would like to see resources allocated more equitably through the district and to have these resources be equitable from district to district so that children who are not in, in, you know, in a decent access to those schools don't have to pay the price on a bus. Our system allows for a student to be on a bus for up to two hours each way. That is completely unacceptable, and it should not continue.
Let me just first start by noting that you, that teachers did not have to reapply to go to Walnut Creek. Walnut Creek was a brand-new school. You can't reapply to a new school.
That's not true.
In terms of the magnet program, I'm, uh, definitely an advocate of the magnet program. It's been a gem of Wake County, and I hope it continues to be. That doesn't mean that there's not some things that need to be addressed. The magnet program today is like originally. The purpose is to make sure we have diversification, integration, and effective capacity use of our schools. That remains what it is today. That hasn't changed. That doesn't mean we shouldn't have strong curricula outside the magnet programs. One of the things I will note about the magnet program that we do need to address, and this has been, I think, the biggest challenge of the magnet program, and that's the selection process to get into it. The lottery is a bit mysterious. That has been the biggest challenge. By the way, I ask you to think about adding this choice lottery for the rest of the choice plan. Something, something to think about. I think we need to have a better selection process that possibly even includes a performance element for a select group of the magnet students. They may be outstanding in math, science, arts, dance. That ought to potentially become part of the selection process to the magnet program. I think we can strengthen it. We definitely don't want to dismantle it.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Matt Goodall from Raleigh. Um, I'd like to know, um, if you support the Blue Plan and what shortcomings you might see in the plan, if any?
Um, Jim.
Jim, I believe.
So I, I have to note, if you haven't seen it in the news, uh, there was a work session at the, of the school board just yesterday. They're no longer talking about the Blue Plan or the Green Plan. They're talking about the Student Assignment Plan that they're suggesting is a combination of elements of the Blue and the Green. So that language will be changing. You'll see that, uh, coming out as people give information sessions. One of my problems with the Blue, Blue Plan is mandatory choice is just as bad as mandatory anything else. I highlighted the issue of the magnet school selection process. The choice works well if you get your choice. If you don't get your choice, then you have issues. So I think we need to think about that very carefully. I do support the balance of the magnet schools and making sure we also have strong schools where children displaced from the magnet sites can go. Magnets, by the way, have two poles, if you've ever played with them. Um, one of the things that most parents that I talk to want to choose, the ones most interested in choice, is that they would like to choose that all children on the same street get to go to the same school. I don't see that choice in the choice plan. So those are some challenges that I see. I would frankly like to see a base with levels of choice of magnets-themed schools and calendar on top of that.
Okay, thank you. Cynthia?
Um, I do support the Student Assignment Plan because it represents the input of this community. And again, that's what we're here to serve, is the community. I support the fact that it is based on proximity, choice, and stability. I support the fact that it is giving parents a right to choose which school, which type of school in terms of traditional year-round or magnet calendar options. I support those choices, but what I do not support is if the choices are not equitable from district to district. And again, um, that is yet to be seen. This plan has been a work in progress. This plan changed as recent as yesterday, if you've been following the news. So it, it's, I do support what has been, what I've, I've, I've observed of it. I've been to, um, seminars. I've been able to review the plan, and I've kept up with it. And so far, I do believe it reflects the needs of the community. And again, this is very well based on 10 years of advocacy that this plan has come together, representing the community, because that is, that is what the majority wants.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Mark Stegner. We've seen kind of two trends in recent times, that, uh, more and more resources are not funded out of the budget, but, you know, we ask parents, we ask fundraisers, et cetera, all of those kinds of things, PTA budgets, and it seems like we're going to have a change in demographics in the economics so that there will be schools with more and less resources. No more glaringly than this week when we saw one school trying to raise a million dollars for Astroturf. What are we going to do about the schools that don't have those resources?
Cynthia, thank you.
Well, according to Superintendent Teta, um, there is a balance because of the low-income schools receiving federal funding, um, as a result of their free and reduced lunch program. So, um, he has stated that it equalizes out. Now, again, I, I am a huge advocate for maximizing federal grants. These are grants that are already created. We're not creating them. We're taking advantage of them, and we can utilize this money to help us, and we can compete for these grants across the board. But we have to, we have to go after them. They don't just come to us and land on our lap. And it's something that I think will be able to provide us with additional resources where they're needed most. But again, um, if, uh, if we're to believe our leader, then, uh, he has indicated that it's, uh, it's, there's a lot of equity in terms of the money that is funneled into the schools.
That's an interesting statement, because I've been to many meetings, and I think Superintendent Teta recognizes that PTAs have very different, different differential funding sources, and uh, you can't use FNR funds to build Astroturf. You're talking about two completely, uh, different things. This is partly why we cannot afford to have high-poverty schools. High-poverty schools are bad for students, bad for teachers, bad for taxpayers. I'm also intrigued when my opponent routinely refers to going after federal grants. I happen to have some federal grants to run my research program at NC State. They come from taxes. Now, I'm glad to invest my taxes to do research, to educate student, students, but let's not pretend that we don't want taxes and then we're going to go after federal grants. That's mythology. We shouldn't do it.
I'm Josh Hager, a voter in District Five, and I was wondering, um, what you both envision as the role of yourself as a member of the school board, as an advocate for and a resource for employees and educators in the schools?
Okay, Jim, go ahead.
I view my role on the school board as one to represent the entire community, parents, students, teachers, administrators, the whole works. Education is about a team, and if we can't, as a governing body, be the group that brings that team together, we're not going to have effective governance. I went into governance largely at the university, after I got promoted to full professor. Not always wise to do such things before then, because what I recognized very early on in my career is that everything, from the chalk that I use in a lecture, to the research equipment, to the number of students assigned in my class, all of those are political decisions, made generally by some politician who has no experience in the classroom, no experience doing research, no experience with education administration. So I realized early on that we need people probably who don't have time to take the time to make sure that wise, education-focused policies are being made. We need somebody who knows what it's like in the classroom making those decisions. I'll be that advocate.
Well, as a reminder, I am a college director at a ITT Technical Institute. So I'm advocating for taxpayers, for students, for educators, and I've been in the classroom. I teach many seminars.
seminars to our students because my background is in career development. So I know what it's like to be in a classroom, and I know what it's like to have challenges in students on different levels. And I know what it's like to be, you know, in a situation where your resources are limited. But I also know how to balance a budget. And I also can bring business acumen to this board. And the better we're able to control that budget, the better we're able to allocate resources to the teachers in the classrooms. And to cut on duplication of resources. And if you, you know, if you know this past budget cut, the teachers weren't cut, the teachers' assistants weren't cut. They were preserved, because we value our teachers. And that is something that I intend to preserve once on the board.
All right, I think, I think we have just one more question. Did you have a question? Okay, so two more questions? Okay.
As a social, as a teacher in the district, every year, there's more to do. Every year, another program is added on top of the programs that we've already been doing. Every year, almost every year that I've been here, my class size has gotten bigger. What are you going to do to make my job of doing the best I can to educate kids a little bit easier? Because there's only so much we can do with the time we have.
Right. Well, you're talking about the entire United States and community right now. We are all having to do more with less. All of us. And it's not something any of us like to do. But because our economy is out of whack, we're having to. And I don't want to see that happen any more than it already has in the Wake County Public School System. And better governance, better control of the budget, better control of how we spend money and allocate our resources is what's needed, so that that does not continue to happen in your classroom. So again, we're all in that boat. But we can change that by better allocation, better appropriation, and better management. It's something I do every day, because I look at my campus's budget every day. And I have to pull from one area and put to another in order to balance that budget. And we need business leaders on the school board, and people who work in education, such as myself, to bring these challenges to the forefront.
Your question is a question felt by every teacher from preschool through the university. The interesting thing is, we often highlight this issue in times of tight budgets, and say, there's all this more you have to do because we have to cut the budgets. But as you know, and as I know, those same things were happening even when we didn't have tight budgets. We have this tendency to inflict pain on ourselves, passing a lot more assessments and administrative responsibilities onto ourselves. In fact, in good times, we often pass more things to do. Oftentimes, we'll have staff to support it, and then we get to the difficult times, and, oh, we're gonna have to cut. And then we don't cut generally the bureaucracy that was put in place. So I think one of the most important things that we can do, yes, we must advocate for funding to reduce class sizes, but one of the most important things we need to do as a board is listen to teachers. We need to find out those day-to-day things that you're doing, or being forced to do. All that administrative burden that's being passed on to the classroom, we need to look at it and see where we can take bureaucracy out of our responsibility, so that we can have instruction and education back added to our responsibility. So self-analysis on our self-inflicted wounds in terms of bureaucracy is, I think, one of the best things we can do in tight-budget times and in generous-budget times.
The last question? Hi there.
Hi.
Hi there. In my household, one of the, our income is based on the economic health of Wake County. And in recruiting folks from out of state, the first thing that we hear is, what about those schools? The current board majority has chose to govern in a way that has hurt the reputation of Wake County, from making us a laughingstock to almost losing our accreditation. If you're on the board, and I'm not looking for a general politician answer, specifically, your second day on the job, what are you gonna do to repair the damage that has been done to our reputation? Thank you. No applause. No applause. All right, Jim, go ahead.
Well, with all due respect, life is not so simple to say, second day on the job, this is the one thing I will do. But I can tell you right now, and what I have been doing for the last 10 years, volunteering in the Wake County Public School System, is bringing my education experience from the university level to K-12 levels to make sure that we have a strong system. And I will continue to do that once I'm on the school board. I think making sure that we have wise, education-focused leadership instead of partisanship is gonna be one of the best things that we can do to rebuild that national reputation. You're absolutely right that the reputation of our school system is critical to the recruiting of businesses to the area, and frankly, retaining businesses in the area. You can talk to any Chamber of Commerce, and they will recognize that right now, it is difficult to recruit people to Wake County. We've gotta change that. We're gonna change that by making sure we have people that understand education, that understand long-range planning, that understand budgets, and wise investment of tax dollars. Like I said, investing in the infrastructure of education is worth more than any tax credit that you can give a company to try to recruit them to the area.
Well, I don't know if you've been talking to the same Chamber of Commerce than I have, but we have a lot of companies that are moving here. And for the last 10 years, our system was recognized by our forced busing, which was a failed policy, because the further students were bussed, the worse they performed academically. My organization, Assignment by Choice, was recognized nationally. And I was, I've been in communication with organizations from across the country that looked at our system and asked, why? Why is this happening? You know, there is a lot of divisiveness, but it isn't just created by the current board. People can come together and discuss these issues without having arrests, without being disrespectful. Respect goes both ways. And once I'm on the board, it is my goal to be a listener, and again, to survey and poll the community, and to represent the interests of the majority, and to keep the divisiveness out, so that we can focus on academics and training, which again, is the purpose of Wake County Schools and all public schools across the country.
Okay, we're gonna start our closing statements. And I think we will start with Cynthia.
All right, thank you again for having us tonight. During the campaign, there has been no question where I stand on the issues. On neighborhood schools, I'm looking for fair and equitable offerings from district to district, stable assignments, and logical feeder patterns. On achievement, I'm an advocate for reviving vocational technical education to provide marketable, hands-on skills to students who are entering the workforce upon graduation. By implementing the nationally acclaimed Public School Model, Knowledge is Power Program, which boasts a 95% graduation rate in high-poverty schools, where 85% of the students are eligible for free and reduced lunch, and 95% are minority, is a model that can work for all children. On fiscal efficiency, we need to drill down into the budget to cut the fat and reduce duplicated resources, not teachers, or teachers' aides, or resources that go into the classroom. As a reminder, Superintendent Tony Teta just announced that $10 million was found in the budget that was not being dispersed. What else are we gonna find in that budget when we really take a close look with a magnifying glass? So where does my opponent stand on the, on assignment? He stated that he doesn't support the current board, a board whose majority is in favor of moving forward with a plan based on stability, proximity, and choice. And that is a result of community input over the last decade from the school system's customers, otherwise known as the public. On achievement, my opponent speaks of, and I quote, "world-class comprehensive education and solutions for schools." But what exactly is his plan to make that happen? Folks, he doesn't have one. His campaign has been all rhetoric with no substance. At least Jim Martin is clear on where he stands with our money. He wants more of it. In his own words, and I quote, "In tight budgets or generous ones, we should increase funding," end quote. Can we really afford such a naive perspective in the governance of the state's largest school system? Absolutely not. Nationwide, as I mentioned, per pupil spending has doubled, while academic performance has flatlined. The focus needs to be on implementing more effective programs that yield high-end results. And there's another thing that's very clear about my opponent's views, and it has to do with politics. This is the first time I have brought up politics in the multitude of times that my opponent and I have been together. He claims that he will not use his position to advance a political agenda. However, in every encounter that I have had with Mr. Martin, and there have been many, he has made a point to drag politics into this nonpartisan race by accusing the current board and administration of politicizing the issues. In doing so, he is taking part in the very activity he claims to abhor. If his actions are contradicting his words now, I am afraid to think what will happen later. Wake County residents are the customers and deserve to have their voices and their choices properly represented on the board. An open book, neighborhood schools, reviving vocational technical education, and fiscal efficiency. If you like the direction our superintendent is heading, that is based on the public input, then you need to exercise your right to choose me on October 11th. Thank you for your support, and thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you. All right, Jim?
Thank you for coming out to this forum this evening. I guess I have to start by saying it's way past time to put the distortion of facts and statements behind us. We heard that Wake County was known for forced busing. I went and looked. We had no, the only tie between the Assignment Plan and our busing policy was that we accommodate state law. The only connection. You heard that the current Assignment Plan is based on years of listening to the public? 95% of the public have said they were satisfied with their current assignment. And in fact, if you look at the choice model, those same statistics show up. We're gonna see the issue of assignment come back to us three to five years down the road. Right now, the public is satisfied. They're satisfied because of the grandfathering. You just heard my opponent talk about the length of bus ride being correlated to student achievement. She has that noted on the website. It was listed by the Board of Education in their response to the civil rights complaint. What she failed to recognize is about two, three weeks later, the board attorney, Ann Majestic, had to retract that statement because it happened to be false. Folks, we need to end the distortion of facts. We need to end the fallacies of, of, well, distortion, distortion to lead to the operation of a system. We don't need to do that. We're much better than that. We're much stronger than that. And that is what will make Wake County's public schools strong. But you all know that public education is the foundation of innovative, of an innovative community. We must keep it that way. You know that education requires a team, a team of students, of parents, of community leaders, of educators. We need to bring that team together, everyone to the table, to make sure that we're making wise policy. You hear my opponent talking about being customers. Last I checked, a customer generally pays for the service rendered. Yes, 72% of the Wake County property taxes pays for education. Her tax bill is about $2,600. Mine's about $1,300. You can go on the Wake County website and look it up. It costs $8,500 to educate one student. You see, if you do not own a $2.2 million home, you do not pay enough taxes to educate one student in our public school system. We're not customers, folks. We're citizens. And that's my call, as we look at this election, as we look at what needs to be done in our school systems, both here in Wake County and across the nation. I want to see a renewed call to citizenship. Thomas Jefferson understood that no democracy, no democracy will survive if you don't have an educated electorate. That's why we need public schools, for innovation, for student achievement, and for democracy. I will lead in that way. I will bring education-focused leadership to the board. I ask for your vote on October 11th. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. This concludes the forum. Give our candidates a big round of applause. Just a few things before we disperse. I would like to thank our timers, Elise Romanoff and Margaret Vergese, who did such a wonderful job timing. And there are these comment cards that were given to you when you came in. If you would fill them out and hand them to the person by the door, that would be very helpful. We really want to try and make these events as useful as possible. Thank you very much. You've been a great audience.
This has been the 2011 Wake County School Board District 5 Candidate Forum, presented by Wake Up Wake County and the Wake County League of Women Voters. Election day for Wake County School Board races is October 11th. Early voting and same-day registration runs September 22nd through October 8th. To learn more about these candidates, please visit ncvoterguide.org. For more information about Wake Up Wake County, please visit wakeupwakecounty.org. And for more information on the Wake County League of Women Voters, please visit lvwwake.org.